Do we have a microphone available for the audience?
Yeah, we can get one. Audience microphone? No, we can get one.
Long, this is Jane. If you could do me a favor and get the name of the audience members who speak so I can get the spellings correct in a minute, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Please silence your cell phones. This meeting is an open meeting for the public to observe the Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees conducting district business. You may address the board during the designated Audience Items section on the agenda. If you have materials to give to the board, please give those to me and I will give them to the board. Microphones are provided for your use. Please be respectful of others during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. The time is 6:04 PM. This meeting is hereby called to order. We have the presence of a quorum and the meeting has been duly called and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. We're going to begin as usual by standing for the pledges of allegiance, and please remain standing for a silent invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please remain standing for a silent invocation, and please let's keep Fort Bend County, Fort Bend ISD, and all those affected by Hurricane Harvey and the flooding in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you, you may be seated. Before we begin this evening, I want to state for the record that all board members are present in the boardroom except for Board Secretary Addie Heliger, who is working emergency shifts right now with CenterPoint Energy, and she's participating remotely during a break in her work, so we want to especially thank her and CenterPoint Energy for all of their hard work during this, during the storm and the flooding. And Addie, we're glad you're able to join us remotely.
Thanks.
Yep. So, we are, we do have some people joining us via audio from telephone call-ins, so in order to make sure that everyone is heard clearly and we don't have any ambient noise that messes with the recording, I'm going to ask that everyone not speak, no one speak over each other. If you want to say something and I don't see you, please just motion for me and we'll make sure everybody gets heard and everybody gets heard clearly for the recording on the audio. Also, I just want to say, I have to give, I have to start with a shout-out for our community and our staff members and our leadership team, our Fort Bend ISD police officers, our Board of Trustees, and all the volunteers in the community. I am truly humbled by how this community has come together. I've received, and I know other board members have as well, numerous emails and text messages and Facebook messages just thanking us for opening Marshall and Kempner as shelters and thanking the staff. The efforts have been coordinated extremely well by Dr. Dupree and Chief Ryder and Mr. Perez and the entire executive leadership team. I personally have seen you guys out there volunteering. I've seen teachers and principals and community members and students by the hundreds, students by the hundreds, serving our community members. And I just have to say on behalf of the Board of Trustees how truly, truly proud I am of our team in Fort Bend. The communication has been very well done. People have thanked us for getting information out as quickly as possible, so I really just want to give kudos to the team and really just thank them for everything that's been done for the community. We see people serving, being the hands and feet out there, and I just think it is incredible and amazing. And on behalf of the Board of Trustees, we really just want to thank everyone. I also want to thank all the board members. I mean, we have every board member in attendance for this meeting, which is 48 hours after mandatory evacuations or less, and so I really appreciate everyone being so flexible and being able to get on with our business and some things that really needed to be discussed in a timely manner. And so, thank you, Dr. Dupree, to you and your team for helping us coordinate that, and for the staff members who are here as well, the executive team and the audience. We appreciate you. I don't believe we have any audience items tonight. That's what's up next. Am I correct in that? So, we will go ahead and move forward. We are pulling the information items this evening since we are not really equipped and we don't have everyone present to go through with those, and we will reschedule those at a later time. Dr. Dupree and I will discuss that, but it's my intent to get them on the next agenda so that we can get the board informed. And we do not have items for closed session this evening, so we're going to skip right through that. My hope is to get us all out well before dark so that no one's out driving after dark with all the flooding going on. So, the next up is our special reports. Do any of the board members have special reports this evening? Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Madam President. I have one special report from the Tasby Summer Board Meeting, and I'm going to submit it. I won't read the whole thing, but I do want to make note of the fact that Commissioner Mike Marath visited with all of the Tasby directors and provided an update on the current state of the accountability measures. He made available a PowerPoint which I've already shared with the Superintendent, Dr. Dupree, and I think you shared that with the staff as well. And the big takeaway is that he intends to maintain a level threshold for five years in terms of not moving the bar so that we have time to achieve that as opposed to changing it every year. The rest of the stuff, I'll just, I'm not going to comment on it this time for brevity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. We appreciate that report. Thank you for sending that PowerPoint as well.
I do have one thing. I would like to echo your comments of thanks to the District Administration and for reacting to this Hurricane Harvey, but also to go back to the start of school because that was a very smooth start, and I know everyone worked really hard to get all of the curriculum ready for the start of school, all of the law and smote, the buses, oil changed, brakes checked, all of that kind of stuff. We opened three schools at one time, and as I recall, had something like 200 summer projects underway, so that's no small feat, and yet, school opened with as smooth as pie. And so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Absolutely, absolutely. And we were there for two days, and then, now we'll have to do it all over again, so...
We've got three.
Oh, three days, sorry. We know you guys can do it again. We know you can, so, yes, thank you for that. Any other special reports? Okay. Yes, Dr. Dupree?
Can I interject something? I just, you know, listening to the accolades, we really appreciate that because we, the last few days have been remarkable in our district, but I just have to say, the people who are making it work are the custodians, the cafeteria workers. Our campus principals are taking shifts 24/7 to oversee these sites, so we're doing our part to lead and we're all working alongside them, but to have so many cafeteria workers and custodians who are willing to come even from their personal sacrifice to cook for all the evacuees, to clean, they're paying a major price. They're doing a phenomenal job. And I just think we have, I want to name them specifically because they're working very, very hard.
I really appreciate you doing that because that's absolutely true. I saw custodians at both sites today. I saw food being served, and I have literally gotten messages where people have said, "Wait, and you're serving food?" And they're just, they can't believe how above and beyond district employees have gone, and it certainly would not move well without our custodians and those working in the cafeteria to help, so thank you for doing that shout-out. Okay, next up is our consent agenda. May I have a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the entire consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion on any items on the consent agenda? Mrs. James?
Yes, I have a question on the very last item that's on the consent agenda, which is the medical plan item. Let me get to that right now. So, thank you, and I don't see anybody from Business and Finance here, but thank you for updating the chart and updating the information on that. I wanted to ask, just quickly, if with these new providers, if we're, and knowing how significant our losses were from last year, if we're expecting change in the, in our employees' premiums? And I'm not sure, Dr. Dupree, who's...
So, I can, I can do a brief answer. Dina Edgar, I believe, is on the phone as well. Steve Bassel wasn't able to participate this evening, but Dina, she can go into a little more detail, but the short answer is, yes, we are expecting to increase rates for staff. We've worked closely with our Benefits Committee to study all the ways to manage the plan and to determine the balance of the things you see here, some of these changes included in this contract, as well as a variety of increases for employee rates or what's going to take to make everything work. We haven't had an increase since 2013, and we're expecting this increase to last at least two years and hopefully three. But what the key is there, some of the plans, and I don't know how many plans specifically we have, but all but two plans would have an increase. The spousal rates would go up more than the employee rate because the spouses are, they're incurring expenditures at a rate that's one and a half times the employee rate without spouses, so the committee felt like to balance some of that by those who are participating with their spouse. Oh, Dina, is there anything you'd want to add to that at this point?
Well, the Choice HRA Plan will experience the largest increase primarily, as Dr. Dupree said, it's underfunded and largely due to higher costs spouses have been and continue to generate on the plan based on our analysis. With these premiums, I will say that the trajectory, the negative trajectory that we have been experiencing will turn positive, and we're looking at an approximate surplus of about 2.6 million with all of the changes, the comprehensive changes in the plan.
So, can I ask a clarifying question on that? A surplus, or are you talking about a surplus, or are you talking about the savings from out, of outlay?
Well, it will, it will actually be running, we're hoping to run in a surplus of about 2.6 million, and the savings is actually expected to be, well, there's different pockets of savings based on the RX changes and the stop-loss changes, and then, the carrier, the premium increases are really a, we're just covering our costs. We're not making a surplus off that. The surplus is going to be generated off of all of these other changes in a comprehensive level.
So, you'd say the surp, we could say it a different way, in that the surplus would offset our, our costs that right now we're...
There you go, yes, absolutely.
Estimating to be about, what you're asking us to approve is about $5.7 million?
Correct.
Okay, so, thank you. And so then, with that, I don't know, I don't know what, I don't recall what the budget plan was for this, but there's been some talk about the $3 million in savings over the initial expected outlay, and I was, is that, do we have in mind, is that considered in adjustments for the employees' premiums? Are we considering how to use that, or is that still to be determined?
No, so, the, the savings for the, just the RX piece, the prescription piece alone, will be about 4.6 million. Now, because we're carving out the RX, United Healthcare will charge us additional administrative fees. They were make, pretty much making money off of the prescription plan for us, and so the net of that will be the 3.1 savings. And that's actually figured into the premium increases so that we can, we didn't have to increase as much as we were expecting to because of the offset of this 3.1 million.
Okay, so that's excellent, so thank you. So, the premium increases will be less because the, of the savings of the initial outlay that you're asking us to make?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. James, and thank you, Mrs. Edgar, for answering those questions and for being here this evening. Do we have any other questions on the consent agenda? Mr. Rice, did you have questions? No? Anyone else? Okay, so, hearing none, we're, we're going to vote, and Ms. Heliger, if you're in favor, you can just give a verbal aye, please, ma'am. Please vote.
Aye.
Okay, so, let's vote, let's, let's all vote by a show of hands, those who are present. All in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous, Jane? None opposed? All right, moving on to action items, 11A1A. May I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I move to approve action item 111A as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mr. George. Do we have a presentation on this item, Dr. Dupree?
Yes, Mr. Perez is prepared to share information.
Thank you all very much. If you all recall, the last time we met, we were, we had an agenda item to bring the CTE forward at that time and ask for y'all's approval. Right before the meeting, we were feverishly trying to work out a contract with the number one ranked contractor. We were not able to do so, so we broke negotiations and we went ahead and sent them a letter letting them know such. Came to the board meeting and we asked that that ought to be pulled. We then went ahead and contacted the second ranked contractor and let them know that we would like to enter negotiations with them. We were able to do so, and so we're here tonight bringing you a, a project for the Career Tech with Bartlett-Cock General Contractors, and it is in the amount of 444,813,000. And we also want the project budget approved at this time. So, the, the project, one of the things that you'll notice on this, it's a little different than what we've been bringing on most of them, is that in this particular one, we, we had a project budget originally of 58,329,189.
Mr. Perez, would you mind speaking closer into your microphone? I think the people on the phone are just having a little bit of trouble hearing. Thank you, sir.
We had, what is a little different in this than what you've been seeing previously is that we're coming in and we're asking you all to approve the complete project, project budget, and we're, we're not looking at taking anything into the program budget. The reason for that is that we, we feel we came in under budget in this project, but we don't feel that we want to release any of this money to go somewhere else. We think that we want to keep it here. Now, we've put it in a, a budget that will require coming back to the board. It's a project contingency by policy. We have to come back to you all to, for you all to allow us to use that. It's in the amount of 2,162,912. So, that is one thing that I want to point out that is different in this particular one. We, ahead of that, we have our normal construction contingencies or design contingencies. All of that is built in. This is just additional money within the total project budget. The other thing that I do want to point out is this particular budget, the original construction budget for this project was 44,500,000. In this case, it's 44,813,000 before you add in alternates that we, you know, if you recall it, we had come in and we had put some alternates honestly thinking that we were going to need that to be able to construct, control cost. In this particular case, we feel and we recommend that we come forward because this will be the cheapest that we can get them done is, is right now, and so, we feel strongly about bringing that forward as a full project, and I'll answer any questions that you all may have.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. So, I just want to ask a clarifying question before I, I open it up. So, you're saying the, the project budget is 58,329,189 dollars?
That's correct.
And that's under the $60 million budget that was originally, 60 some odd million dollar budget that we originally thought this was going to cost?
Well, no, the, the budget that we had, we had brought you all before for approval was that exact amount, 58,329,189. That is what you all approved when we, we came forth, you know, almost a year ago, I guess now, and you all approved that budget. And so, what we're doing is, we're saying, we, we've come in to where we could possibly release the 2 million, but we, we do not recommend that that be released into the program at this time.
I think, Ms. Tossan, what you may be thinking of was the, the original bond program had closer to 60, but I think three or so million was carved out to do CTE improvements at other campuses. Above, so the whole package for CTE improvements in the bond was around 60 million with this 58 being for the CTE center alone.
Okay.
And the rest is currently being spent in projects at other high schools.
Okay, but you're saying that this came under budget by about 2 million dollars, but you want to keep that in reserve as contingency to possibly use on this project, but with board approval?
Correct, and we, we want to keep it basically as, as contingency in case something comes up. You know, we, we have, one of the things that has changed from the last time we did Geo-Technical is we received over 50 inches of rain.
Right.
So, it's, it just is a little bit of a change.
That was going to be my next question after everybody else asks, is with the soil problems, what is the rain and all that done with that? But, okay, I'll let some of the other board members ask first and then we'll, I'll come back to it. Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Madam President. So, Mr. Perez, I'm, I think I'm understanding that the original construction budget was at 44.5 million?
That is correct, sir.
And so, we've got it at 44,813, roughly 313,000 over.
That's correct.
But that includes all the alternates that you originally provided as a matter of cost control. We were able to accept all alternates plus the original foundation issues related to the soils report for only 313,000 over the original project budget.
That is correct.
Okay. And then, now you talked about the 2.1 million, I think, for project contingency. I don't see that on my sheet here. Is that included in the construction contingency?
No, sir, it is, it is a separate item that's literally project contingency.
It's not on this item, it's in the book. It's not in the document.
Well, if it's in project contingency, you're telling me it's in project contingency and you'd like to keep it there until we're much further along with the project?
That is correct, sir, and I, I do apologize. It is in the memo, amended memo that we sent, but it appears that it is not here. It shows a zero in, in this particular one.
And, and we, and we do have a construction contingency of a little under 10% for unforeseen conditions and so forth?
We do, sir.
And, and you're going to monitor that, you and our, okay, all right, very well. Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Heliger.
I, um, thank you, Kristen. I just wanted to make sure, what's the numbers for remaining in contingency?
Could you clarify the question?
So, maybe I missed some of it, so I do apologize, but the contingency but, dollars that you're talking about, is it just for this part? Where are we getting the money from? So, based on where you're getting the money from for this project, what's the remaining part of our contingency bucket? Is it coming from the contingency bucket that we currently have?
No, it is, it is coming within the originally approved budget for this project.
So, is your, Ms. Heliger, is your question about remaining contingency for the remaining bond contingency?
Well, I guess I want, I guess I was having a hard time hearing, but I wanted to understand what this, what, when he was asking for the contingency to be, I think, what, 2.1 million?
So, that's going in, into contingency, is that correct, Mr. Perez?
No, the, the 2.1629 million is a contingency that we're asking to be approved within this project, but we cannot use it without coming back to you all for, for approval, so we...
So, you, okay. But you said that this was already approved by the board, so that's what I was asking. So, if you're asking, are you asking for additional 2.1, or are you just...
No, ma'am, what, what, let me clarify. What I was saying was that originally the board approved the 58 million, and within that 58 million, this is, this 2 million that we're carving out into this contingency that would require board approval at a later time if we needed to use it. Our intent is to hopefully not touch that, but at this point, I just would not want to release it.
I guess I'm not understanding why we have to do that now. If you've already, if we've already approved, if we've already approved the budget of 58 million dollars, and you're saying that you carved out the 2.1 million dollars for contingency, but you don't have to, you don't have the work to actually do it right now to use the 2.1 million dollars? Why are we, why do we need to prove that now?
It is mainly an accounting function. In order to balance the budget out, we had to show it in a specific line item, and in this case, we're showing it under project contingency, which still allows the board to control that amount of money.
Okay, so then, so then, so based on what you all have up there, it'll say 56 million dollars, I'm sorry, do the math, whatever, the 2.1 minus the original 58 that was approved, and that's all we're doing? We're just changing it from one line item to the next? So, the approval, the same approval is for the same amount, the 58 million dollars, correct?
Correct, the approval is for the same amount.
And you, you're only asking just to move it from one bucket to a, a new bucket, is that correct?
We're, we're carving out the 2.16 million so that it's, it's within the original 58.3, but we, if we wanted to use it, we would have to come back and let you all know why we need it, and then we would have to receive you all's approval.
Okay, I'm fine. All right, thank you.
Mr. Rice, did you...
Sorry for the question.
No, that's okay.
I was getting a little confused there, sorry.
Mr. Rice, did you have a clarifying question?
Well, I was going to ask Mr. Perez, so what we're, if we vote and approve this tonight, we're approving Bartlett-Cock in the amount of 44,813,000 to start construction, and you identify the construction contingency of 4.1 million. Is the 2.1 in the 4.1 million?
No, sir.
Okay, so, that amount is accessible to the contractor based on your approval, based on district approval, so as not to slow anything down. And in addition to that, you still have 2.1 million dollars, I'm going to say, in project reserves, a little, little safety cushion, that instead of releasing it at this point in time to the entire bond program, you're going to keep it assigned within the, within the CTE original overall project budget, just in case you need it, because we've already encountered difficulties with the soil conditions there. I drove by there today and there's two feet of water in the field, and, and so, it would be there, and the only reason you're bringing that to our attention is since we have this safety factor, this reserve, if you will, if something comes up and you need to spend it, you'll have to come back to the board for permission to spend the 2.1 million.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
So, just in full disclosure, you've shared all of that information with us?
That is correct.
Okay. That, that, that helps me understand it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. Rosenthal?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mrs. James?
Well, I'm sorry, but we're trying to get it to add up, and we're, I'm having a little bit of, I'm having a little bit of trouble. bit of, I'm having a little bit of trouble, because if I, even if I take what's in the, on the agenda item, and I add the $2,162,600, sorry, $912, I still only, I'm only getting something like 56.4 million. So, I might be doing it wrong, or I might misunderstand, but...
So, I'm going to ask Mr. Perez, will you walk us through the numbers that are in the, in the agenda item?
Could, could I ask Kevin to step up? He's been working on this a little closer?
Sure.
Have him walk us through this?
One day, are they preparing? If I may can ask, everybody to speak closer to the mic, so that way the people on the phone can hear, because when you talk farther, it mumbles. So, if maybe I can speak closer to the mic. We can't turn up the master volume anymore, because it will have a feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Long.
And let me just make one other comment on the, on the math, because I'm looking also at the chart that was in the memo, and it doesn't quite, that chart is the same numbers as are, as are here without the contingency, but that's, I don't think it's exactly the, the contingencies in the original program budget column, not in the proposed project budget column. And I, it still doesn't, I can't quite seem to get it to add up, so I don't know if that helps.
Okay, so, so I'm sorry it's split on two pages on your memo. If, if you put that on one page, so that you're looking at, at the original program budget, comes down, we had 2.16 million in project contingency. We're proposing a project budget of zero in project contingency. So, the, the change there was the 2.16 million. That corresponds to what's in the, the board agenda item, so that the memo matches the board agenda item.
So, let me clear, let me jump in to try to, what I'm hearing you say, then, is what Oscar said originally is not, is that the 2.1 million is not what we're asking the board to approve?
No, the 2.1 million would not come back to the board. It would be in the 4.118 and in the construction piece. We're spending all of the project contingency with the revised budget, which is in that second column of your memo.
Which is also what's in the board book. For, so what we're saying is the board book is accurate, but what we just discussed tonight had some misinformation, was not accurate.
Was a little confusing, because it's on two separate pages of the table. That's, that's what I'm seeing.
So, the proposed project budget column of our memo matches the board book, and that is what we're approving this evening?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, Mr., Mr. Rice?
I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly. So, the 2.16 million is included in the 4.1 million?
Yes, sir. I stood corrected.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. James? We're doing the math. For those of you on the phone, we're...
That makes more sense.
Yeah, I added it as appropriate.
Because what we were doing, it was like, there's still something about 2 million short somewhere.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, thank, thank you for the clarification.
So, what we, so, excuse me?
Go ahead, go ahead.
All right, so what we're approving, we're actually moving what was program contingency into construction contingency to make the construction contingency closer to the 10%.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Rosenthal, did you have anything else?
Yeah, so, it's kind of funny, because about a year ago, I had asked to see the 100-year floodplain map on that property. It's like, oh, yeah, we're, no problem.
But did you ask for the 800?
800. I did not ask for the 800. So, I guess, what do you think as far as, you know, because obviously, we've had some concerns with the soil, and we still feel like there's, you know, a single slab, you know, that, that's going to take care of this, right? But what if it doesn't? How much, how much higher could this thing go?
The, well, the actual, the slab that is proposed at that site right now is slated to be raised to begin with, before we even start with the, with the suspended slab. So, it comes up quite a bit. The, the water that's there, because I was there this morning, and I, I was looking at it, and the, the levee system and everything has worked as designed, it's not even close to being breached. The water that's there is literally the, whatever rain we received, and there, at this point, there's no drainage system or anything there. Once we construct on the site, you know, we're, we're going to have underground drainage and everything to drain, you know, the site itself. But, you know, I mean, to sit here and tell you we're not going to have any issues, I, I couldn't do that.
But, set aside the drainage issues, let's say that none of us ever see this again in our lifetime, which is the likelihood. We, you, you feel like, you know, a single slab is, is going to, in other words, we don't have to pier and beam this kind of thing, this thing, because of the soil there, right?
Oh, no, this is, this is a pier and beam.
Oh, it is?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, because that's not what I understood when reading through this stuff.
No, sir, it, it is.
Okay. Good, 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 good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Any additional questions? Mrs. James?
Okay, my only other question is about the, if there's been any more information from the forensic engineer on the Madden, Madden Foundation situation, and I'm only bringing that up, because it's a common general contractor.
No, ma'am. At this point, there has not been any. We, obviously, with the situation we've been in, would imagine no one is, or if they are working, they have not provided any additional information to me.
Okay, and when did we, when did we hear from them last?
It has been probably about two weeks ago.
Any other questions from board members? Okay, hearing none, please vote by a show of hands in the boardroom. All in favor, and Ms. Heliger, you may vote verbally. All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous approval. Ms. Kaiser? Okay, last up are our future board meeting agenda items. Dr. Dupree, do you want to go through those for us verbally, please?
Yeah, I'll just go through this briefly. We are going to be adjusting this a little bit based on postponing some of tonight's information items, but basically, in September, we'll do a budget update, as we previously committed, about our budget reduction efforts for this year and how we're moving forward with that. We're also going to do an update on the learning management system, the Schoology implementation, and we're going to schedule a demo for the board as well to come and play around with that and see what our teachers are using and students in the classroom. A number of items, including the tax rate adoption in September. We'll also be bringing forth any class size waivers for classes that exceed the state allotment of 22 to 1, and several other items there that you can see. Then, of course, going into October, you can see a number of items on them related to the Summit of Evaluation for the Superintendent. We'll be doing our listening tour, literacy, board literacy tour coming up this fall, along with a number of student achievement updates for the board on some of the things we've talked about recently, on how we're helping students plan, our counselors, district improvement planning, turnaround implementation for Ridgemont Elementary and Briargate Elementary. Let's see, just trying to look at any major items. So, I'm not going to read all this to you. You can see there's a number of reports coming up this fall on all items that are important to the board.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. Do we have questions from the board members on that item? All right, hearing none. Thank you all again for being here. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
It's a motion by Ms. Heliger, even though she's not in the boardroom, and a second by Mrs. James. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks.